We call the adjourned regular meeting of December fourteenth to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
We'll ask Councilmember Dobie to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
All right. Who has a flag?
Pretend.
Okay. Right hand over your heart. Pete after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll ask Dean to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, if you'll bow your heads and join me. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight for the last council meeting for the year 2020, a year that we would rather not revisit, we ask that you bless those that are in our community in this holiday season so that they are clothed with your mercy and your goodness. We ask that you protect those who are serving in the military away from home. We ask that you protect our first responders, police and fire. We ask that you protect the new incoming council as well as the council members that are leaving tonight. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We have presentations. Wendy, will you handle this?
For the presentations, as you can see hopefully on my screen, can you see where it says presentations to Councilmember Gross?
Yes.
Okay, so I did provide you a list earlier. If you'd like, I can go through the list and read them aloud, or you can as the mayor. Your choice.
Okay, I'll read them. We have presentations to Dean for his service from Senator Tom Umberg, Orange County Sanitation District. They gave a very nice. Los Alamos Unified School District. Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce. And the Rossmore Community Services District. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mark.
Okay, for Mayor Murphy, we have similar presentations as well, starting with Senator Tom Umberg. We also have one from the Joint Forces Training Base. The Orange County Transportation Authority. Very nice. The Orange County Sanitation District. The Los Alamos Unified School District. The Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce. And the Rossmore Community Services District.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to oral communications. Wendy, do we have any oral communications?
We did have listed on the agenda that anyone wishing to speak could email us in advance. We did not receive any requests to speak this evening.
Okay, I did receive one request, and I'm just going to do it here for. We normally Art from Maderas gets up and explains about his charity feeding the veterans on Christmas, but due to the COVID and the Zoom, unable to do so today. But Art did ask if I would mention that he is doing the charity. It's a little different this year. He can't go to the hospital, but is going to homeless veterans shelters. Three of them in the Southern California area. He is looking for volunteers and for donors. So if you can do either, please stop by Maderas and help him out. It's a great cause. Move on to council announcements. Dean, would you like to go first?
All right. Since our last meeting, I attended the Westcom meeting back on the seventeenth. I've also participated in the White House COVID briefings on November the eighteenth, December second, and December seventh. Participated in the Chamber Monthly Breakfast Meeting in November. Attended the League of Orange County Cities Program on November the twentieth, dealing with the RENA program. That's the housing numbers. I've also been participating in a meeting with a group called CALE. C-A-L-E. That's the California Alliance of Local Electeds. Been in meetings with them on November the twentieth and December the sixth. This group is very active, includes a large number of constituents or colleagues, rather, up in the northern part of the state. Peggy Wong from Yorba Linda is one of the gals that's involved in it from this area. And they're dealing with the RENA program as well as local control. And they also have some significant issues with the League of California Cities. And they're talking about some type of protest in terms of renewal of membership dues. So when that comes back to the council, I will try and provide that information to the city manager. In November, I conducted the Regional Military Affairs Committee. Our speaker was from the Tierney Center in Tustin, the Orange County Goodwill. On December the first, I attended the economic, the eleventh Economic Summit from the Southern California Association of Governments. I also participated in a Zoom meeting with the America Defense Communities. On December fifth, I joined a number of colleagues with the Winter Wonderland Light Show, which was a unique and fun event. On December ninth, I participated in an OpenGov virtual lunch meeting. And I've had discussions with city manager and with our finance director on the OpenGov program that the city belongs to. On December ninth, I had a Zoom meeting on the impact of Proposition nineteen, which was misleading to the taxpayers. It is a new tax that's going to hit parents who transfer their property to their children. And it will begin as early as February twelfth. It's something that if you have property and you're looking at potentially passing it on to your children, the rules have changed. They referred to it as a death tax. But what will happen is your property gets reassessed at the current valuation unless you make some arrangements prior to the February twelfth implementation of this. And the regulations are really unfortunate because I think the voters saw it in a different fashion. And like many of our initiatives that come across each election, they say one thing and do something else. That's all that I have. I'd like to take the opportunity to wish everyone a Merry Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a blessed New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya?
So since we last chatted, I attended my regular monthly OC Human Relations Panel, my vectors meeting. I'm sure y'all have noticed that mosquitoes are not as active. We can thank the change in weather for that. I was, I also attended the last chamber meeting and was at Winter Wonderland. And the Winter Wonderland, although very different, was still very nice. It was a wonderful time. I liked that we still had some songs and some dances and the tree being lit up. And I would like to give a special shout out to our lovely city staff because towards the end of the evening, I had some car troubles. And Ms. Katie and then an angel of a young man, whose name I can't remember, came and helped me. And then Chirco jumped out at the last minute, like, hey, I can help. But they got my car going and it really, it did not put a damper on the evening at all. It was still a great time, so thank y'all.
Thank you. Could I ask you, did Mark sound like Gomer Pyle like that? Or?
Yes. That's exactly how he, after his, after Shannon kept hitting him like, dude, you're not gonna, that's Tanya's car. Finally, I was like, okay, fine. Yeah, I'm telling it all. I can't leave any, I can't take anything into twenty twenty-one, so I'm leaving that right here, Chirco.
Yeah, so I wanted to give a quick update on our firefighters who were injured at Silverado Fire back some time ago. They're making very good progress. One of them is now out of ICU and is in the regular UCI Medical Center. The other one's slightly behind him, but they're both doing really well. You know, so that's good. They've got a long road as far as rehab and physical therapy and things, but I believe that they're out of the woods now. You know, I want to, I've been getting all kinds of neighbors around just thanking and wanting to thank staff for everything that they're doing to try to keep the normalcy as best as they can for the memories, the events, even though they look different. It just, it's something that they're just like, please, thank you so much because we have something to look forward to. We have a Friday night movie. We have Winter Wonderland. We have classes. We have, we can get our pets vaccinated. We don't leave our car. I mean, there's just all kinds of stuff and they're just, I just kudos to just thinking outside the box and stuff, so that was really nice. Love the new street signs. I know those are in the works of getting in place, but those look really nice. And then I just kind of wanted to bring attention. I mean, I know we're, you know, we have a lot of residents and just overall people struggling. Last week, I was, you know, driving by. We've got a lot of phenomenal nonprofits, but specifically Grateful Hearts. We recognized them a couple of meetings ago. Saturday morning, I'm driving by down in Catella, and I saw this line, and I thought it was for Starbucks because, you know, who doesn't stand a line for Starbucks? And realized it was the line to get into the food pantry, the additive drive-through food pantry. And that line was about a half a mile long. That's in our backyard, folks. That's right here. So the work that they're doing, that all of our nonprofits are doing to make sure people have food, have electricity, have whatever they need to survive. I just want to give a shout out to all of our nonprofits and just doing, because, you know, their fundraising efforts are down, but they're still able to provide the best that they can. So just want to give a shout out to all of the nonprofits just for continually to selflessly give. And that's it.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure, I attended the drive-in movie theater event at L A Y B to watch Princess Bride with the family. It was a great event. Reminded me of old time drive-in movie theaters. So these events put on by Recreation and Community Services Department. They're excellent and they've been very popular. I understand they've been selling out very quickly. Also attended the Memorial Care Miller Women's and Children's Hospital Winter Wonderland festivities on the new Epson campus on Catella. As mentioned by Tanya, it was a fantastic job. There was fake snow. There was holiday characters, massive tree lighting. You know, great, great job by our lean city staff putting on an event that it looks like it took a hundred people to put on. It was excellent. Mayor Murphy's invitation, I attended three weekly calls with the Orange County mayors. This is a chance for all the county mayors to meet and talk about different issues in the county and addressing some of the state's mandates on local government in the best way that we can as cities. And I think this group, it's a great chance for the cities to work together to try to benefit all of us. And I trust it'll benefit Los Alamos going forward. Echoing what Councilmember Gross, what Dean said is that I'd like to wish all our residents a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. You know, twenty twenty was unprecedented. Our residents, our businesses, our first responders, healthcare workers, everyone's been hurt by this pandemic and is struggling. And, you know, I just want to use this opportunity to say thank you, especially to our healthcare workers who are stretched to the limit right now. So I know twenty twenty-one will get better. Hopefully, it'll get better quickly, but this year was tough. Hopefully, everyone can enjoy the holidays and follow the recommendations by the health authorities so we can quickly get over the hump and improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And to follow up on Mark talking about this year being tough, I attended the Winter Wonderland and it was magnificent for the constraints we're under. Megan had a few surprises thrown at her, handled them like a seasoned professional. You would have never known unless you had the script that things had got bumped off. At a time, we've all been cooped up basically all year. It was a great respite for all our citizens. And you know, you've done it all year. I just want to say, you know, congratulations. I mentioned Art and Maderas. I'd also like to just request people shop local, you know, especially our restaurants that are, they're really hurting now. And any business you can give them might make the difference between staying open and not, not making it. It's that close. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the sponsors, Epson for allowing us to use their house, and the Children's Hospital for their sponsorship. I would like to ask if possible, down the road, that we honor the Highway Patrol officer who was involved in the homeless shooting. I know it wasn't a great result, but it was true bravery on his part. And I think we should, we should take a look at that. We'll go on to items from the city manager.
Thank you, sir. And just wanted to report as we get to the end of our holiday programming, what the next upcoming event is actually Wednesday. It's the holiday decorating judging will happen on Wednesday between six and nine. So just want to remind all the residents to make sure their lights are on so that our parks and rec commissioners can get out there and tell us who did the best job this year. That's it, sir.
That's it. Thank you. I will go on to the warrants. We can ratify the warrants. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Move by Dean. Second by everybody else?
Sure.
Roll call, please.
That was a motion by Councilmember Gross, seconded by Councilmember Hasselbrink. Roll call, Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Dobie.
Yes.
Councilmember Gross.
Yes.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Yes.
We'll move on to the consent counter. All consent counter items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Did anybody like to pull anything? Seeing none? Mark, I'll second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Okay, we will move on to item eleven. Awarding the city manager performance-based incentive bonus for calendar year twenty twenty. Attorney, will you take that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you know, the city council met at its last regular meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, in closed session to discuss the city manager's performance and compensation. Pursuant to the city manager's employment agreement, the city manager may be entitled to up to a two percent annual performance-based incentive bonus, which may be awarded at the sole discretion of the city council. By adopting the proposed resolution, the city council would approve the award of a two percent performance-based incentive bonus to the city manager for the period of January twenty first, twenty twenty, to December thirty first, twenty twenty-one. This bonus would total three thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. This performance-based incentive bonus would be provided as a lump sum payment and shall not be added to the city manager's base salary. No further changes to the city manager's salary or compensation are proposed at this time. The recommendations set forth in the agenda report serve as a final action on the salary and compensation paid to the city manager pursuant to Government Code three six five oh six. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Any comments?
Richard, I just wanted to confirm that this is part of his original contract that we negotiated with him, correct? This isn't something we've added just for messaging wise?
You're correct.
Okay.
Sorry, Michael. Still your few minutes there.
And I'll just add that, you know, from our perspective, from my perspective at least, Chet has faced some pretty tough odds this year with they. I think he knew we were facing some fiscal difficulties. He did not know when he took the job that there would be a global pandemic affecting, you know, everything, every aspect of his job. And he's done a phenomenal job really steering the city through that, keeping morale up among city staff as far as we can tell. He helped secure funding, closed the budget shortfall, really, really did a lot for the city. So, you know, thank you, Chet. We, it's well deserved.
Anyone else? Do I need a motion?
Yes, please. A motion and roll call.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the bonus.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dean. Roll call, please.
Mayor Murphy.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Okay, we will go on to special orders of the day. As all of you know, Dean and I are leaving as of tonight. And we're going to talk about him a little bit and then talk about me a little bit. And then we'll be done. But, you know, when we drew the district lines, it was obvious that one or maybe two good council people were going to get left by the wayside. And unfortunately for Dean, it was him. Dean's had a long, great career at this city. Hope you stay involved. The, you know, if you, if you've worked with Dean, what I've always admired the most about him is Dean is there when the work starts and he's there when the work stops. He's not one of these token vice presidents who shows up to collect the awards. He actually is in there flipping the pancakes or doing whatever else is necessary. And it's really what makes events go and for cities to work. And Los Alamos has always had a reputation for putting on events way above their weight class. And Dean has been an integral part of that, especially his work with Wings, Wheels and Rotors, which he was just exemplary. So Dean, we're going to miss you and wish you all the best of luck in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Mark, did you want to say something?
Sure, I'll be brief. Dean, I also want to thank you for your service to the city, for the hard work that you've put in. It's been a pleasure working with you on the council the last couple of years. I know, I think we all know, you're definitely not going away. You're going to continue to be heavily involved at the base, the community, the chamber, and elsewhere. So we also expect you to be watching us and let us know your thoughts. Let us know if you think we're, we're going off in the wrong direction. We want plenty of feedback, but we wish you the best of luck. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Anyone else? City manager?
Yes, thank you, sir. I would like to say that, you know, transitions are definitely never easy. Obviously, coming into the city at the time that I did, I looked to the council for obviously a lot of direction and a lot of handholding with regards to the important issues of the day. And I just want to thank the council member for his willingness to spend the time to bring me up to speed, to let me know some of the history of the different institutions in town. And then also just the willingness to be a sounding board for good ideas and bad, and the willingness to say when ideas were good and when they were bad. So Councilmember Gross, I truly do appreciate, you know, your willingness to work with me and your dedication clearly to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Dean, we have a presentation of a plaque from the city to you. There it is. You must, you're going to need a new wall. Maybe it's the garage for all your awards. Would you like to say some, some comments, Dean?
I would, if you'll indulge me. You know, what began for me in two thousand and two as a journey to be of service to our community has been an incredible opportunity to become a public servant. There have been many twists and turns along the way, some unexpected, but a good learning experience. Being an elected official, as I became in two thousand and six, is a lot more work and commitment, very rewarding in knowledge, growth, and personal development. I need to pay a special thanks to my biggest supporter and soulmate, Wendy. I've been honored to have her at my side, standing and guiding me along the way. I'd also like to thank the current and prior city staff members over these last eighteen years. They are far more dedicated to our residents and businesses than many know, often delivering service above and beyond what folks may realize. Our executive staff likewise are committed to the same goals. I'd like to thank them for their leadership and assistance, answering my myriad of questions that I've posed. And to our city manager, Chet Simmons, who joined us in February of this year with great visions and plans for our small community, only to get sidetracked a month later with the arrival of the worldwide pandemic. Chet, your mentorship and guidance has been greatly appreciated, more than you know. To the citizens and businesses of our community and the new council, I wish you all great success as this small city addresses the challenges that we know remain ahead. My pledge to the many, many supporters that have helped me since the early beginning back eighteen years ago is that I will continue to offer my assistance and knowledge as requested. Los Alamos is a great city to be preserved and proud of. God bless you all, and thank you.
Thank you, Dean. You know, before Dean leaves the stage, I would like to bring up one more thing. And it's Dean and I were elected together in two thousand and twelve. Let's just say, to be polite, the city council did not have the sterling reputation it now enjoys. Things were bitterly divided. Dean and I came in and were able to turn things around. And I think we proudly pass on a council that can disagree but does it with class. And I think, and Dean was a big part of that turnaround. So that's part of your legacy there, Dean.
Thank you, Rich.
You're very welcome. We'll turn it over to Mark Chirco.
All right, well, Richard, on behalf of the other council members, the staff, and also the residents of Los Alamos, I want to give a heartfelt thank you to you for your dedication and your significant contributions to the city over these last eight years. You've told the story repeatedly, I'll add, about how before you ran for council, you would, you would come to council meetings and talk about different issues back when the council was really divided and fighting about everything. I know you served a brief stint on the Traffic Commission, but thankfully for the citizens of Los Alamos, you decided to run for council. You won, and as you've told, and we've all witnessed, you brought stability to the council. You, along with Dean and others. In your time, and in Richard's time, I'll speak about you rather than to you. In Richard's time on the council, no matter what the issue was being addressed or how he came out on a vote, nobody could ever question that Richard was trying to do what was right for the city. And he always did it in a way that never put people off or made the votes or issues about Richard. It was always about what was right for the city. During his eight years on the council and three terms as mayor, he helped guide the city and served as an anchor to reasonableness, sound judgment, and analyzing issues in a no-nonsense way that only a successful CPA and business person could do. He also brought a great sense of humor to the council, never afraid to tease any of us, staff, or most importantly, himself. He's represented Los Alamos well, also beyond its borders during his successful years with the Orange County Transit Authority, the Sanitation District, Westcom, and Orange County Library Advisory Board. So I'm not sure how the council will function without Richard, but he will be missed by us on the council, by city staff, and by our residents who frequently bring up Richard, at least to me fondly. To Tina, his wife, thank you for letting the council and the city borrow Richard for these years. Now you're stuck with him full time, so good luck with that. Now you're stuck with him full-time, so good luck with that. But, but we do wish you the best of luck, Richard, and again, thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you. Can I get a copy of that speech, please?
You wrote it. You told me to say this stuff, so.
Just some outline, not, I didn't write it, it was outline.
Does anybody else want to add anything, or have we made Richard's head too big or ready to?
No, I'd like to speak up just because his head is big, but we don't have to deal with him after today anyway, so I'm good with that. You know, Richard, I just wanted, you know, for, for a guy that, you know, doesn't have any social media and depends largely on his flip phone, you are by far the most popular elected official in Los Alamos. I, I've never heard, you know, a bad word about you, well, exception of Tina, but other than that, the residents really love you. You know, you, you always looked at an issue and wanted to make everybody happy and tried to find a resolution of, you know, splitting the baby in half so everybody was, come out, felt like they, they got what they wanted. You just had a gift for being able to do that, even in our, you know, controversies or disagreements amongst us council members, you always found a way to, to, everybody walked away happy, feeling like they won. You know, your, your history in Los Alamos resonates among all residents, you know, and outside the city. I mean, I, you know, from a number of cities, you know, you, you are the number one guy brought up. So I just want to thank you for kind of calming the storm in very too much of those time during our city, and it allowed us to kind of move forward and put the storm in the past and really get some good, good work done. You didn't, you never needed all the accolades. You were more than happy to, to give the, the cool jobs to other people for the experience and everything and, you know, and you weren't afraid to cry at an event. I, you know, I, I love that, you know, you just, you, you care for the city, you, you love the people, you love your family, and, and it's shared, you can't fake that emotion and compassion. So looking forward to the housewarming party out on your new digs when we can. And just thank you for everything that you've done for our city.
Thank you. If you like the tears, you may really enjoy the speech tonight.
Oh, good lord.
Chet, did you want to say something?
Sir, if I can, you know, reading from the notes that you prepared for me to use tonight, I just want to point out, so obviously, we were thrown into a very difficult situation, you and I, very quickly, once I started with the pandemic. And I think we reached a level of comfort very quickly. And one of the things that, and I'll just echo what the mayor Protem said about your ability to cultivate this, you know, error of what's reasonable, that we can all work together, that we can find a solution without being combative, that's a, it's a rare commodity, but it really speaks to, I think, at least what I see in the role that you have played, which is, you know, true leaders make people better. And that has been kind of what I've taken from my time with you. So, sir, I appreciate your, your confidence and your trust, and I, I look forward to the conversations that we'll have in the future, because I know that there'll be many.
Thank you. Mark, you're still in charge, I think.
Okay. With that, we'll, we'll move on to the discussion items. And I think we're going to start with the city council reorganization. Wendy, is that correct?
Hey, wait, wait, wait a second.
Small portion there. We're going to present the mayor with his presentations first and then allow him a few outgoing comments.
He, he's got, he's gotten enough love tonight. Sorry about that, Richard. I just, I thought we were done with that. All right. So we've got presentations. We'll, we'll start with a gavel plaque for serving as mayor in 2020. Very nice.
Thank you.
Richard, how many, Richard, how many is that for you? Like seven?
How many gavel pla- I keep getting the same one. Wendy just keeps updating the plate.
Told me he doesn't want more than one gavel plaque.
A tile plaque for serving as a council member, 2012 to 2020. A picture board from the city.
Oh, thank you.
And a Richard Murphy way street sign.
That's cool. Maybe I could show Tina that sometimes it should go Richard Murphy's way here.
Good luck with that.
Thank you. A warning, it came in, it was emotional, been emotional in between. I got a lot here to get through, and I suspect it would be emotional going in. As we're all aware, the wonderful job I did as mayor, I would like to use my time more to say thank you. Thank you to the citizens of Los Alamos for the honor of serving for eight years. It seems like yesterday that I was sworn in. I really told Tina today, I said, I can't figure out where eight years went. It's been quite a journey. I've been called everything from a great man to a lady calling me to tell me I wasn't fit to be dog catcher, and probably everything in between. I, I want to thank all those who voted for me, and a heartfelt thank you for all those who helped me campaign. Slogging house to house with flyers is not as much fun as, as you may think. Thank you to my supporters. Marilyn, Judy, Jody. Art, Dave, John, Pete, and many others. I wouldn't be here without your support. When I was sworn in originally, I joked that my sister had advised, advised me not to embarrass the family. Since all the family members are still talking to me, I guess I met that, that admittedly low bar. I also need to thank the small group who gave me suggestions and advice along with solutions. That's the key. It's easy to say someone should do something. The solutions are the key, and I truly enjoyed our conversation. To the staff, as you all know, we've had three general managers in the last year. Both new general managers went out of their way to say we had a great staff and an unbelievable can-do attitude. Ron, Emlyn, Megan, and the entire park department, you've done an incredible job under the most trying of circumstance. The city has always had a reputation for putting on events that would make a big city proud, and that was before anybody ever thought of masks and social distancing. Now to my favorite city clerk. Wendy, somewhere at clerk college, they teach you that my pleasure is a correct response to every request. I'm not sure what my pleasure is code for, but after my many computer-related challenges, I have some suspicions. Your sense of humor got me past the frustrating moments, and your professionalism quashed some of my crazier ideas. Chelsea, you do so many things so well, I can't pick one. Suffice to say, it's the city manager praised you to the heavens. Chief, you do, you seem, the bigger the task, the better you got. The tighter the budget got, the more creative you got. I hope you will thank the entire department for their professionalism and bravery. Craig, David, and the entire finance team. Despite COVID restrictions, you were able to educate our citizens about the city's financial situation and achieve the passage of measure Y. A little bit closer than we would have liked, but I think in the end, we did secure Los Alamos's financial future. Michael, we say all the time between us that if you were not the, not the city attorney, we would have been in tough shape. You were right almost every time. We didn't always take your advice, but you were right for all of that. That's all you can do. Chet, history has shown that when most necessary, the right person shows up, and for this city in 2020, that was you. I don't ever remember hearing one negative thing about the tremendous job you were doing. And for a city that made city manager criticism a sport for many years, that is high praise indeed. To show you how crazy 2020 was, measure Y, which we all recognize as the future of Los Alamos and job one, became a backburner issue as COVID and the homeless situation took over. Through it all, you kept us informed as you worked tirelessly to keep us afloat and headed in the right direction. Finally, to my colleagues, past and present, working with all of you has been the highlight of this job. I look forward to watching Mark assume leadership. As you all know, Mark is a little slow to accept credit and, but he and Shelley did great and largely thankless job on the budget standing committee. It's been fun watching Tanya grow into community leader. Want to say welcome to Jordan and welcome back to Ron. Let's see. As to what the future holds for me, one thing I'm sure is I'm going to be a lot less politically correct. I know Wendy's thinking, is that possible? But yes, it is. So don't be surprised if you see my name responding to some of the idiotic comments on Nextdoor. COVID has delayed our travel plans, but hopefully the virus is under control. Merry Christmas, and even with Joe Biden as president, I'm sure 2021 will be better than 2020. That's it. I'm sitting in a room by myself in a chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Good job. Thank you, Richard.
All yours, Mark.
Thank you. We will now move on to city clerk Wendy. You will administer the oath of office to the newly elected council members?
Yes, we will. We have a pre-recorded oath of office for our newly elected officials. And during the playback of the oaths, we will also dismiss Richard Murphy and Dean Gross from the meeting.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Win Mary Kintanar, and I am your city clerk. On November 3rd, 2020, Los Alamos held a general municipal election for the office of council member one, two, and three. A record number of residents went to the polls and voted this year. The election has now been certified by the Orange County Register of Voters, and as part of tonight's event, the Los Alamos City Council approved the election results. It is my honor to announce the successful city council candidates voted by you, the residents of Los Alamos. In District One, we have council member Tanya Dobie. In District Two, we have council member Ron Bates. And in District Three, we have council member Jordan Napolda. Please enjoy the following pre-recorded oath of office for each council member. Today, we have council member elect Dobie with me in the council chamber. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, stating your own name. I.
I, Tanya Dobie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Hello there, Los Alamos District One voters. My name is Tanya Dobie, and I will be honored to be your council member for the next four years. Thank you for all of those that voted for me, all of those that helped me to get here, all of your support, your kindness, and your care. It is not going unnoticed. I cannot wait to see what we're going to do for Los Alamos.
Today, I have council member elect Bates with me in the council chamber. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, stating your own name. I.
I, Ronald Bates.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I just want to thank the community and specifically the residents and voters of the second district for re-electing me to the city council after 16 years. So I appreciate your support, and believe me, I will work very hard on your behalf and on behalf of the community. Thank you again for your support.
Today, I have council member elect Napolda with me in the council chamber. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, stating your own name. I.
I, Jordan Napolda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, just want to thank everyone who voted for me. I look forward to working for both my district and the entire city of Los Alamos. Please feel free to reach out to me with any concerns or questions you may have. Hopefully, it's going to be a great 2021 after this year, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Hey, Chirco, they all look pretty normal. We're going to have a run for our money.
I'm glad you spoke up, Shelley. That was, that was a wonderful video. Welcome to our newest, well, welcome back, Ron, and welcome, Jordan. We look forward to working with you. Although I do have to warn you, I'm going to show you the Christmas card, the city Christmas card from three years ago. You'll see Shelley's here, but I'm going to go down the line. Moved out of state, moved out of state, moved out of state, moving out of town, all after serving with Shelley. So, you know, it's just a warning to you that, you know, past, hopefully the past does not dictate what happens in the future with the rest of us, but a fair warning to you all. With that, we'll move to item 13A, the city council reorganization. City clerk Wendy Kintanar, I think you'll take it from here.
Yes, sir. So tonight, we have the annual reorgani- reorganization by the election of mayor and mayor Protem. Our city charter requires a roll call vote for each of these offices. The mayor and the mayor Protem serve at the pleasure of the city council. Nominations will be considered in the order received. A second is not required, and again, we will have a roll call vote. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations of the office of mayor. After nominations, I will close the nominations, and a roll call vote will be taken in the order received. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor?
I'd like to nominate Mark Chirco, even though he's not very nice to me.
Second.
Are there any further nominations? So there be no further nominations. Nominations are closed. We'll be voting for Mark Chirco for the office of mayor. We'll do roll call by, in alphabetical order. Councilmember Bates.
Aye.
Councilmember Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Napolda.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor Chirco.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone on the council. Appreciate it. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the office of mayor pro tem. After nominations, I will close the nominations and then ask the clerk for a roll call vote in the order of nominations received. Are there any nominations for the office of mayor pro tem?
Yes, I would like to nominate Shelley Hasselbrink.
Second.
There any other nominations? There be no further nominations. Nominations are closed. Please vote for Shelley Hasselbrink for the office of mayor pro tem.
Again, we'll take roll call in alphabetical order. Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Mayor Chirco?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Nefolda? Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem. Hasselbrink.
Thank you. I've got a realtor guy if you need one.
We're all going to break that that path. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 13B. I think City Clerk Kintanar, if you could provide a report.
Yes, sir. So this is our annual appointment and reappearance of our council members to representative of other counties and to our ad hoc and standing committee. This is nothing out of the ordinary so far this year. We do have a couple of points of interest. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Board. Councilmember Dobie is serving on that until January 2022. The Orange County Fire Authority is currently seated with Councilmember Hasselbrink. We do have to send them a resolution reaffirming our appointment. And then that is only a delegate. They do not allow for an alternate anymore. And this round, we are adding a waste hauler ad hoc committee. City staff is working with a member of the city council and one member of each commission to get the RFP process and award that. That one is a new item as well. As part of your agenda packet, you had the 2020 list that list who is currently seated on those commissions. And then there was a 2021 list in there that was blank. How would you like to handle the appointments, Mayor?
We can go, we can go item by item, perhaps from the chart, the 2021 chart. And I think, for example, Orange County Fire Authority, I suspect Shelley will want to stay on the Orange County Fire Authority. Is that right, Shelley?
I love my firefighters. Yes, please.
Okay, now, do we need to vote on each one, Wendy? Or do we just make a decision and then take a vote at the end?
One, we can go through appointment by appointment. And once we have consensus, we'll do one vote at the end to confirm all those appointments.
Okay, very good. Sanitation District, I'd like to volunteer to be the delegate. And perhaps unless there are other suggestions, have Ron Bates serve as the alternate? Any, any opposition or suggestions otherwise?
San away.
Okay. Mosquito and Vector Control, Councilmember Dobie is on that for at least another year. So we'll leave that as is. The League of California Cities, Wendy, this is typically the mayor and mayor pro tem. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Unless anyone has any opposition to that, we'll, we'll leave that as is. And then we have the annual conference later this year. We can decide who will be the delegates for the annual conference as we approach.
Correct.
City selection meeting, is this typically also the mayor, Wendy?
Yes, typically the mayor. And we don't usually have an alternate for that one. If the mayor is unable to attend, we need, we send in a letter at that time authorizing other delegates.
Okay, very good. The Orange County Library Advisory Board, I've been on the advisory board for the past two plus years. But if anybody, and if anybody's interested in that, I'd be happy to let them take over participation on the library board.
Mark, for the new ones, how often do they meet and what time? Just so they can understand kind of the time commitment. It is a really good introduction, just because all of Orange County is represented and stuff, understanding people's time constraints.
Yes, so it meets, the schedule or the plan is to meet four times a year. I will tell you that some of the meetings do get canceled because the group cannot achieve a quorum. But the meetings are typically one hour, either in Tustin or Santa Ana, though, of course, they've been via Zoom since the pandemic began. So maximum of four meetings a year, one hour per meeting.
Mark, unless somebody else is interested, I'd volunteer to handle the library board.
Okay, very good, Ron. We'll, we'll put you down unless anyone else has any input there.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Point of order, would you like an alternate for that as well?
Sure. Do we typically appoint an alternate, Wendy?
Yes.
Okay. Jordan, as, as the new guy, we'll appoint you as the alternate if you're okay with that.
That's fine with me.
All right. Okay, and next we have Westcom, West Cities Communication Center, the JPA Board. Any interest there?
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Okay, anybody else interested in participating in the Westcom Board? And Wendy, do we, do we appoint an alternate for this as well?
Yes.
I'd be happy to be the alternate on that one, Mark.
Very good, Ron. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the Budget Standing Committee. I think unless there's opposition, Councilmember Hasselbrink and I would like to see this off for one more year and get next year's budget set after the passage of measure Y.
I think I'm the only one that can handle Chirco at this point, so I'd like to hang on to that.
Is this how this year is going to go, Shelley? The whole year is going to be like?
It's never changed.
That's all right, I enjoy it. Okay, so we'll do Chirco and Hasselbrink for the Budget Standing Committee. And the new committee, which is the Waste Hauler Ad hoc Committee, which will meet on an as needed basis. Any interest there? This is going to be a very important one in the next year.
If nobody else wants that one, Mark, I've had considerable experience in that area and would be happy to help.
Excellent, Ron. I was hoping you would volunteer because, because you do have quite a bit of experience, both on the council and in city government. So we appreciate that.
You'll be great at this.
Any alternates?
Just one council member for that.
Excuse me, any, any volunteers to be an alternate?
I'd volunteer for that. If you're interested.
All right, Jordan, thank you. And Wendy, I think that's everything, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion then to, to make those appointments to the committees as stated and noted by City Clerk Kintanar.
Second.
And the motion by Mayor Chirco, seconded by Councilmember Bates. And we'll do a roll call. Mayor Chirco?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie?
Ta-da.
Okay, Councilmember Nefolda?
Aye.
Very good. And the last item is a closed session item. I think city attorney, will you take us into closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss item 14A as listed on this evening's agenda.
For our new council members, you'll receive a message on your screen that a breakout room has been opened. You will join that breakout room.
We're, we're back from closed session. City, city attorney, anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council has reconvened from closed session and has directed the city attorney's office to initiate litigation. The defendants and other particulars with respect to that litigation, once formally commenced, shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. And that concludes my report from closed session.
Very good, thank you. I think that does it. Meeting adjourned at 8:03 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ron, Ron, were you saying something? Oh, you're telling me.
Merry Christmas. I'm happy to be back, see all you people. Thanks, thanks a lot. It'll be fun.
Thank you.
I hope we can see everybody in person next in January. That would be nice.
That would be nice.
Take care.
Thank you.